Good evening. We're here at the Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, May 29th. Starting about five minutes late, it's about five past seven. We're reconvening from executive session to open session. We had an executive session for the purpose of discussing issues at 190 Main Street. At this time, I'd like for us all to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which is the justice of our nations, and to God, who gives us all liberty and justice for all.
Just to note that Jonathan Eaton will be absent this evening for the meeting. We have Treasury warrants, number 46, 46A, 47, and 47A. Is there a motion to accept those, the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? And we had some minutes. We have minutes of the April 2nd, 2018, meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April 2nd, 2018, as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any errors or omissions that need to be corrected? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous? And we have minutes of the May 14th, 2018, Selectmen's meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Errors, omissions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor? And voted unanimously. For appointments, we have our first appointment, Karen Leveque. Is she here this evening?
No, she isn't.
Okay, and you would be?
Bill Wallace.
Bill Wallace, okay. Okay, Bill, why don't you come up? This is a public hearing in regards to relocation of a pole and placement of two poles on Adams Street. It's a, so you're not the right-of-way manager from Verizon's?
I'm representing them.
Okay. So you could state your name and your position with Verizon?
Good evening. My name is Bill Wallace, representing Verizon in this poll petition. I am a contractor working for Verizon. This poll petition is for, involves three poles. Pole 24 to move out from the backside of sidewalk to the front side of sidewalk, and to add two additional poles, Pole 25 and 26. This will allow for services, utilities, to be brought down to a new home that's pretty much built down just beyond Number 60 on Adams Street. There will be a couple of guys placed along, because it's on a curve of the road, so there will be a couple of guys placed as well. Glad to answer any questions anyone might have. Pretty much it's an extension of existing pole.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up.
Chair, have residents been notified? I would assume.
Yes.
No butters?
Yes.
Have there been any concerns voiced by the resident?
Not to this point, but certainly part of the meeting, I suspect, the chair will give them an opportunity if their questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Is anybody else?
Well, why on Pole 24, why'd you have to move it in closer to the road?
To get it out so the other two poles will line up a little better, to be able to place the facilities. It's a few, it's pretty, quite a few trees through that area, and if you notice, Pole 24, for some reason, when it was originally placed, it's placed off the road a little bit. Like I say, it's on the other side of the sidewalk. This brings it more in line with Pole 23, and in line with the new Pole 25. Thank you.
So, does this relocation of the pole, it's going to now go on the sidewalk?
No, it'll be just in front of the sidewalk, between the curb and the sidewalk. There's probably about 18 inches of grass there. It's where the rest of the poles along the street are. Like I said, I don't know why this particular pole was placed. Maybe it was convenient to be able to get service to the house at Number 60 at one time. I don't know.
But the other poles along that street are in that strip of property as well?
That's right.
So in your opinion, so Mr. Chairman, if I get, so in your opinion, there won't be an issue, because they're all seem to be right in line with one another?
Correct.
All right, so there's nothing?
Yeah, the only, the only need for the guy is, the couple of guys that have to be placed, because there is a curve on the road, and there will be a slight pull on the poles, so the guy will prevent the poles from, you know, topping over at the top, pulling over at the top.
That makes sense.
And nothing will affect the sidewalk itself?
Right.
Me, the way of the sidewalk? Because that's my biggest concern.
Concern.
And when I drive around, I see poles on sidewalks.
Yeah, no, this would be, from where the stakes, there's currently some stakes out there to indicate where the poles and the guy would go, and they're away from the sidewalk. There seems to be ample room there along the sidewalks. It's a pretty decent wide sidewalk.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. So this is a public hearing, so I'll ask if there's anybody here for questions, Mr. Wallace, in regards to the pole locations? I don't see any. So...
Mr. Chair, I would just note that originally, there was a question as to whether the location of the poles would necessitate an approval from the Conservation Commission, but as is noted in an email from Ryan Hale, our Conservation Agent, he's taken a look at this location, and there is no requirement for Conservation to get involved.
They walked with the Verizon folks, they walked with them last Friday, I believe it was, to go over the locations.
Okay, so we can take a vote now to accept the two poles and the relocation? All right, so is there a motion to accept the relocation and the two pole placements on Adams Street?
I make a motion to accept as described in front of us here this evening.
Is the motion made, is seconded by Mr. Laub, motion made by Mr. McCoy? Any other discussion? All those in favor? And we have a 7:15 appointment with our town accountant, Michael Morris, in regards to the review of the Standard &amp; Poor's rating. We got our signatures rolling here.
Mr. Chair, if I could just lead off with a brief opening comment. We had a team of folks, Mike Morris, Pam McKenzie, Dee Casey, Valerie Gingrich, and Karen Rassus, and myself, who were involved in preparing for this conference call with S&amp;P for a ratings review, and this is a standard practice that takes place prior to any long-term borrowing. The conference call took place on May 16th. I thought we made a very strong case as to why Wilmington is a solid community financially. We're growing, and quite frankly, was looking to pursue an upgrade to a AAA community. At the end of the day, Standard &amp; Poor's was very complimentary on many aspects of our operation, but we did retain the AA+ , which is what we've had now for some time. So I asked Mike, who was really quarterbacking this effort, to come in and talk a little bit more in detail.
Take it away.
A lot of positives that we were very happy with. They mentioned flexibility, that we were under the levy limit. Mentioned a strong economy locally in Wilmington, but in Massachusetts in general, and it's far better than most of the United States, and that's even in a strong economy. They were very positive about our management and our policies. They were very happy with conservative budget policies that have been followed for quite some time in Wilmington. The very strong liquidity, i.e. we have a lot of reserves, and we have access to some, such as free cash, and some of them are more difficult to get access to, such as stabilization funds, but we still can use those as necessary. They were quite happy with our low debt thresholds. They do, however, consider OPEB, or post-employment benefits, and the retirement liability as debt as well, and they were less happy with that, as we saw later in the evaluation by them. They're very happy with the industrial values and broad and diverse business economy in the town. Very happy about Analog and quite a few of the other companies. There was some level of concern. We have 139 percent, I'm going to use the term right here, national per capita effective buying income. Wilmington was 139 percent of the national average, which is quite good, but the AAA communities are in the 160 percent category, so that's kind of a leap for Wilmington to get to. We have a long-term budget plan and do forecasting five years out. Again, very happy with that. They reflected on the public, the building study we did. They were rather positive about that as well. They were down, they wanted an OPEB plan, and we have an OPEB plan in our minds, but their idea of the plan is somewhat different, and we are continuing to work on that concept. We just want to be cautious about what we commit the town to. They were very concerned over the retirement system. The retirement system is frankly, we're at a low percentage of 45 percent, roughly, and they're also concerned that their estimate forecasts for the next few years are too high, as they're using 7.75 percent, and they're saying it should be more like 7 percent. So that would inflate the IOU there. Town is taking actions to prepay the retirement and reserve money in a retirement stabilization fund. Again, a good thing for the town to be doing anyway, but they also look favorably upon They were also happy that we were doing funding on the OPEB as well, but they're commenting in quotes, it was, "Over time," they want to see what we do with it, and what burdens that faces on the town going forward. And they ended up coming up with a AA+ , which is...
Yeah, I mean, that's great. Congratulations. Kudos to you, the town manager, and all of management in Wilmington for getting a AA+ again. I know, probably a little disappointed in you getting that AAA, but getting the AA's a big, big positive for the town, without a doubt. And I read through this, and we have a plan for OPEB. I saw that their two biggest issues, and I think, you know, whether, whether that's, you know, their excuse for denying the AAA, but it probably is, the way, the way I've read it. We have a plan for OPEB, and you've been following that plan, and I don't understand why they don't see it. And as for the pension fund, you know, the Public Employees Retirement Commission, PERAC as they refer to, is recommending all pension plans be at 7.5 percent. You know, they want us to go to 7 percent, and we're at 7.75. So we're in the ballpark there as well. So I know we're a little low on the funding, 45 percent funded right now, that, that probably could be a little better, but again, we have a plan to attack that, you know, so that shouldn't be their excuse for not...
Also, we mentioned, I keep forgetting to mention this, that the town has taken some actions to amend some of the benefits plans in the way they are addressed in the town, changing the Medex plan from one plan to another, and that would reduce some of our liability as well, and if it's done globally, would be quite significant.
Yeah, to that point, so I think S&amp;P was looking not only at the town's plan to set aside funds to pay off this liability, but steps that we're taking on the other end of the equation, so to speak, to reduce the cost. So one of the things that, one of the steps we took three years ago was to offer a second Medex plan for retirees, which is their portion of health insurance that supplements their Medicare piece, and we had a Medex III plan, which was a very rich plan. We offered a Medex II plan, which is a bit more cost-effective from our perspective, and people were given the opportunity to move into the Medex II plan. That provided some measure of relief on the OPEB side, but one step we are taking, which unfortunately won't be reflected in the S&amp;P evaluation that we just had, was that as of 1-1, 2019, the Medex III plan will no longer be an option, so anybody on that plan will be transitioned to the Medex II plan. Again, it's a less expensive plan, so that's going to have an impact on our OPEB. So that really addresses the other piece, which I think they're looking for from the town, which is that we look at ways we can reduce the cost of our health insurance benefits. So perhaps the next time we go through an S&amp;P review, we'll get credit for that.
It really is a glowing report, I mean, that they gave us, so, you know, it really...
Happy with the English in it, frankly, for the most part. We do realize that retirement, I think, is, my gut feeling is, it's the biggest burden in terms of why we didn't get AAA.
Any comments from the members?
Yep.
Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mike. Appreciate you being here, and I want to compliment you and the manager as well on this report. You certainly get a lot of praise here on page three for strong management and very strong budgetary performance, so that's credit to you and your staff, so I appreciate you both. And I do have a question, and it kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Kyra's comments a few minutes ago in the report here, I believe it's on page five, it goes on to say, "The town, in our opinion, the credit weakness is a large pension obligation where the plan, there's no plan in place." Then later on in the report, it goes on to say, "The town made a full annual required pension contributions in 2017." So we are fulfilling and further contributing money to our retirement stabilization fund, and we made an additional payment to... So we do have a plan in place. They just don't see it that way. But is there anything, in your opinion, we could do a little bit differently to relay, I mean, in addition to what Jeff just had?
I think it's very difficult to work on benefits. We got some advice from a consulting that we talk to sometimes. It's very difficult to fund your way out of this. You have to make some changes to the plans, and that's frankly easier said than done. It's very simple from a town accountant's perspective, but I'm not HR and so on and so forth, so it gets rather difficult to do that.
Right. And in the report, they praised the amount, the free cash that we have as a healthy reserves, so that was, that was a positive as well?
Yes, very much so.
Well, I really appreciate it. I can appreciate that both of you, not only just not being satisfied with the AA, you know, as a resident myself, I really appreciate you guys trying to strive for that AAA bond rating, and I'm sure, confident we can get to it. Appreciate your efforts.
I would just make one further note that, again, in terms of the presentation, so there were a number of aspects to this presentation. One was presenting the financial strength of the town in terms of its budget, its reserves, its discipline with respect to expenditures. We also needed to make our case in terms of the development and business that's happening in town, so as I noted earlier, Valerie and Karen were very instrumental in putting together information that was conveyed to our counterparts at S&amp;P. Again, Dee talked about the benefit changes that we have been making, so it really was a team effort in terms of making the best case we could as to where we stand.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, it's already been said, but obviously, it's really good to see that they came back, and it's in a positive manner for the town of Wilmington to be AA+. You know, the reports came back good. You know, the manager, the town accountant, the staff, they put together a program. It's gone forward, and we're in decent shape, and it's just moving forward from there. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, kudos to everyone, it's already been said, but keep up the hard work, and like, like Mr. McCoy said, just keep going, keep the ball rolling.
I'd like to also thank my assistant, Lorraine Herman, who did an awful lot of work on this, and a lot of people throughout the town hall, especially Dee and Valerie did a lot for us, and Pam and Karen as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're, since you're here, Mike, with us, we have a board to consider item, number six, and it would be good that you stay here for a little bit, maybe we can invert the order and take that up.
So Mike wants to stay here all night?
Yeah, good. So we, Mr. Town Manager, we'll move up number six, the board to consider?
Yes, so this is what really precipitated the S&amp;P rating review. We are in the process of engaging in long-term borrowing. You'll recall, over the last couple of years, we have been issuing bond anticipation notes specifically for the Entile Farm Recreational Facility, and then the Fire Pumper, both of those were approved a few, a couple of town meetings ago. In addition to that, we have two water projects that were completed in the last year or so, one being a water main replacement on Middlesex Avenue, and the second being a water main replacement on Balladvale Street that runs over Interstate 93. So all of the funding for this is now going to be grouped into an issuance 15 years, and the sale amount of the bond is $5,306,000. It's a general obligation municipal bond. And so the board is being asked tonight to take a vote. It's actually multiple facets to this vote, and unless the board has any questions, I'll just read this into the record for the board to consider. But this will, again, this will cover those four projects that I referenced. So what the board is being asked to vote on, again, from, this is prepared by Bond Council, it notes, "I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wilmington, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held on May 29, 2018, of which all members actually strike that, four members of the board were duly notified, at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody." So the motion would be to vote that the sale of $5,306,000 in general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2018 bonds of the town dated June 1, 2018, the bonds, to Roosevelt and Cross Inc. at the price of $5,824,68102, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on November 15 of the years, and in the principal amounts and their interest at the respective rates as follows." And then there's a chart here that references the years 2018 through 2032, with varying principal amounts, starting in 2018 of $431,000, declining to the final year of 2032 in the amount of $35,000. And then further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statements dated May 16, 2018, and a final official statement dated May 23, 2018, the quote, "official statement," end quote, "each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified and confirmed, approved, and adopted." And then further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15 C2-12 in such form as may be approved by the Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. And further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, and time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk in a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GL Chapter 30A, Subsections 18 to 25 as amended.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept this as read by our town manager?
So moved.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, or any discussion, I should say? None, all in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chair, I would just note that there are a series of documents that will require each of your signatures, so rather than do that now, my suggestion is, at the conclusion of the meeting, we can do that in my office.
And with that, with that unanimous vote, there is one absence, just to note. Should have made mention on the other votes as well, with the, with the poll, but I'm sure you, you have that down, Bev. Okay, I think we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we're on communications. Mr. Manager?
Next, under communications, I just wanted to announce to the board two recent appointments that I've made to the positions of fire lieutenant. The first being Walter Daley, who has been appointed to fire lieutenant, specifically operations lieutenant. Mr. Daley, Lieutenant Daley, is a 24-year veteran of the town. Mr. Daley, Lieutenant Daley, is a 24-year veteran of the town. In his new role, some of his responsibilities include managing the emergency medical technicians' recertification process and the training for the department, ensuring that the vehicles are scheduled for maintenance and proper repairs as needed, and also engaged in maintaining the inventory of the various medical supplies that are required for their operations. Then second, would like to announce that Mr. Vary has been appointed to the lieutenant's position and he has, he's been an 11-year veteran of the, of the town, Robert Vary, Jr., and he will be assuming the position of Fire Prevention Officer. His duties include inspecting various buildings, inspecting the nursing homes and medical facilities on a quarterly basis, also new construction, prior to issuance of a occupancy permit, and working with the elderly services director. And then one other element of his responsibilities will include working in the schools to provide fire prevention education. So both gentlemen were appointed and their appointments took effect last week. Next is a memo to the board with regard to the recycling collection services. You'll recall, there was a discussion back in March about the issues that had been brought to our attention by our current contractor, which is Russell Disposal. And the issues there essentially stem from China's plans not to continue to take recyclable material from the United States and many other countries throughout the world. This has created a real challenge in terms of the material recycling facility, or so-called MRFs, trying to identify places to dispose of this material. This is an issue not only for us here in Massachusetts, but across the country. There was a piece in the New York Times that I actually forwarded to board members, I believe in today's edition, that talked about the ongoing struggles here. So you'll recall initially, the plan was to have a temporary arrangement with Russell Disposal where we would pay for a portion of the cost of the disposal at Casella Waste Systems, which is where Russell brings the material that they collect from the town, in the hope that things perhaps would change to some measure. Unfortunately, they have not. During the month of April, the actual disposal cost that Russell is paying was a hundred and two dollars and twenty-nine cents per ton. The number did drop down in May to ninety-seven, forty per ton, but there's no indication that China's going to change their policy. And it's my expectation that for the foreseeable future, we're going to be dealing with this issue of, not only us, but other communities, how to dispose of the recyclables that are generated. We have, the current arrangement runs through the end of June, so it was my decision to, rather than go out to bid and try to get other quotes, to try to work with Casella, I'm sorry, try to work with Russell and pay for a portion of the cost associated with this disposal at Casella. So the agreement, I'm looking to modify the existing contract and state that we would agree to pay fifty percent of the disposal cost, up to a maximum of fifty dollars per ton, so we would share in that cost. And the reason for doing that is, after the prior discussion with the board, a request was made to get information, gather information from other vendors that are in the collection business, and the Public Works Department did talk with, I believe it was four or five different vendors who are competitors to Russell, and each of them indicated that they would, if they were to put in a bid on the town's collection, the base rate, if you will, aside, setting aside this Casella fee, would be higher than what we're currently paying. Plus, they would also put in a so-called escalator clause, or insist on an escalator clause in any contract, which would mean that the town would pay the full price for the cost of disposal at Casella or whatever MRF they use. So from that perspective, instead of paying potentially fifty percent of the disposal cost, we would be on the hook for paying one hundred percent of the disposal cost. Another added cost would be that when we, if we were to sign up with a new vendor, we would be paying the current prevailing wage rate for the labor associated with the collection. Right now, we are prevailing, paying a prevailing wage rate, but it was based upon a schedule that was established four years ago, so the schedule is slightly less expensive than the one that we would be paying going forward. And then finally, the arrangement that we made with Russell when we entered into this agreement, was it in order to obtain the recycling in trash barrels, the cost of that was, I believe in the order of nine hundred thousand or thereabouts. We agreed to pay that off over time. We still have a cost of about six hundred thousand dollars for those barrels. Again, the contract that we have is a 10-year contract, we'll be starting our fourth year as of July 1. So if we were to go with another vendor, we would have to come up with six hundred thousand dollars to pay for the remaining balance there. So the purpose of this memo was just to advise the board that, while I understand that, you know, previous comments noted that people need to live within their contracts, and certainly I would expect that we would do that and the people we contract with would do that, I think given these very unusual circumstances, you know, we need to try to work with the vendor to the extent we can.
Jeff, just one question, if I may, regarding China. It seems like it's all depending upon the market from China and them taking these recyclable items. If that changes, and if they open back up, will we, you know, let's say we go with, with the increase, and now China opens back up, will we go back to the old agreement? Are you putting something in there so that if we, if we go with the fifty percent share and we have to go with this increase along with the other towns that are associated with Russell Disposal, because China has closed down its market to them for recycling material, and then all of a sudden that market opens back up, will they go back to the old agreement?
I have not drafted the language yet. I would certainly look to revert to the old arrangement, if possible. Yes.
Okay, I just, you know.
And if the, as it stands right now, so the way this rate would fluctuate is if it, you know, other markets open up, whether it's China or others, and the rate, you know, drops down to eighty-five dollars, and our share would be, you know, fifty percent of that, or forty-two and a, you know, forty-two, fifty, so it would gravitate with whatever the going rate is, and that rate changes month to, month to month, but it in no instance would exceed fifty dollars.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Next is a memo to the board, just outlining the interview schedule with the potential candidates, or the candidates for Town Council. The first interview date is Wednesday, June 6th, 6:00 PM. You'll be meeting with representatives from Mead, Tillerman, and Costa. And then at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, June 6th, KP Law. Then on same date, 9:00 PM, Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lehane. And then on Tuesday, June 12th, at 6:00 PM, the board will be meeting with Collins, Lofgren, and Peliquin. At 7:30 on June 12th, the board will be meeting with Brooks and Durensis. And it's my understanding, based upon the prior discussion, that the board will have discussions at your meeting on June 25th, and then make a decision at that point. As you'll recall, the current arrangement we have with Brooks and Durensis runs through the end of June.
Any questions? No.
I just have a comment, I guess I'll throw it out there. I don't know if anybody else is hesitant about a nine o'clock interview. To me, I don't know how fair that is to the, those who are being interviewed, the interviewees. I don't know, I'll throw it out there, see if anybody wants to bite on it, that we changed that one, but.
Just a point on that one, and I'll defer to Beverly, because she made the calls, but I believe they were very happy to have a nine o'clock. Apparently they have other things going on early in the evening.
Trust me, with a one and a half year old, I have nothing going on at nine o'clock, but I can assure you, but, you know, it's just, I want to make sure we give everybody a fair shot. That'll be, we'll be going on three hours before we're trying to pay attention, close attention to a potential candidate, so.
You gotta have some doughnuts, we got plenty of doughnut trucks in town, or maybe a couple of pizzas. I don't know where you're gonna get them, but, yeah.
Definitely a problem, that's for sure.
I'm serious, Jeff, you're hoping on a fetus.
All right.
Any other comments? I don't.
My two cents, yeah.
Next is a memo from Mike Woods, the Director of Public Works, with regard to unaccepted ways. Question was brought forward about unaccepted ways. I won't go into all the details that are contained in the document, but the board may wish to consider at a future meeting, having a discussion about addressing unaccepted ways. I would just note, because this is a question that many offices get from time to time, asking why their road is not reconstructed. There's a difference between public ways and unaccepted ways. So as you recall, in the lead-up to town meeting, in some instances, some years, there'll be recommendations for a particular street to be accepted at town meeting. And in those instances, the street has been, it's gone through the planning board, it's met certain requirements in terms of drainage, road width, and various specifications that, in the judgment of the town engineer, are acceptable and are recommended to the, to the town meeting. If the town meeting accepts that roadway, then it becomes public, it's owned by the town, and we're responsible for maintaining it. Private ways are just that, they are owned by the abutting property owners, they have certain rights to the center of the road. And so one of the challenges, unfortunately, for people that live along those streets is that the town cannot spend public dollars on improving, you know, to a large scale like that, reconstructing a road, any more than we could spend public dollars on, you know, repaving someone's driveway. So we, unfortunately, the town has a number of private ways, over 200, and it is an issue that, that we should take a look at going forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Jeff, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It was certainly brought to my attention when Muse Ave discussion was going on, because when that house was built, that had problems. The people concerned about the roadway getting flooded into, onto their property. It's alarming that we have over 30 miles of unaccepted roads in town, that's pretty alarming. Yeah, I would like to come up with a plan where we could, where the town could put forward some of these streets on a, maybe on a yearly basis, to get them accepted. Because I know, one resident on Muse Ave didn't know that his house wasn't on an unaccepted street when he bought it. So, I mean, it is getting plowed, it's not getting maintained, but it is getting plowed in the winter. So the town does do that, and I know that of many other streets. Sherwood Road was another one, a friend of ours lives on, that actually gets graded by the town every year, and that's an unaccepted street. So yes, I would like to see the town come up with some plan to pick off, well, peck away at this on a yearly basis, to get these roads, roads accepted and up to snuff, like you had mentioned. And I'd like to see that happen in the future, if at all possible. Thank you.
Next is a letter of appreciation that I sent to Scott Smith for his efforts and the efforts of the Tree Division, and I'll just read this into the record. "It is with great pleasure that I write to express my sincere gratitude to you and your storm cleanup team members during your most recent efforts required by the nor'easter storm events experienced on March 2nd, 2018, March 8, 2018, March 13, 2018. Your team-leading efforts during this very challenging bout with Mother Nature has propelled Wilmington to be one of the first communities to reach substantial cleanup and with one of the lowest outside contractual costs to complete the job at hand. Since March 3rd, 2018, the DPW administration logged over 320 reports of downed or hanging trees and limbs as a result of the storm conditions. It is my understanding that aside from the overtime costs, contractual costs associated with this cleanup effort have to date totaled a mere one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Given the extraordinary costs absorbed by other communities as a result of these storms, some of which totaled over a hundred thousand dollars, this achieved cost savings is simply extraordinary. The town of Wilmington is lucky to have such dedicated and talented tree care professionals on staff as part daily operations. Although we do not often seek recognition, the jobs that go unnoticed or without public criticism are oftentimes proof of achieved success. However, the value of the tree work that your team was able to accomplish in-house and thus save the town money is an accomplishment that shall not go unnoticed. This is a testament to how important it is to have qualified arborists on the staff as part of the DPW organization. On behalf of the Town of Wilmington, thank you again to you and your team for all of your, all that you continue to do to protect the public infrastructure and the urban tree Next is a letter from Anne Marie Rotundo and Judith Agnes. This is, they are members of the AARP Foundation. Again, this is directed to Terry, Terry Marciello and her staff, and I'll just read this into the record. "During the tax season that ran from February 3rd to April 12th this year, seven volunteers from AARP worked over 403 hours to complete 195 tax returns for seniors in the Bazzell Senior Center. This was a wonderful result, as we were using new software and all the information had to be hand-typed into the program. We also had snow days." We also had snow days. Terry Marciello and her staff were invaluable in signing seniors up for each tax session and reminding them to come the day before their appointment. They provided a way for seniors to have peace of mind that their taxes were done and that those eligible for senior circuit breaker of $1,080 could file for it. For many, the money paid for winter heating bills and medicine, the town of Wilmington has once again proved its most vulnerable citizens a wonderful service. Please thanks, please thank the wonderful members of your staff, especially Terry Marciello, who made this tax season such a success for your, our seniors. Looking forward to continued collaboration in the years to come."
A copy presented to Terry.
Yes.
Okay, we're down to board to consider. We already took care of the bond issuance, and we're going down to number seven?
Yes. So number seven, we have a request for a block party. This is from Kristen Stokes. They have made a similar request now for a number of years. This is for a neighborhood block party on Saturday, June 16th, from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The specific location is West Jamaica Avenue, and they're requesting sawhorses for some of the adjoining streets to be blocked for this period of time. The police and fire, DPW have all been notified, and no one has any issues with this request.
I don't know, is Kristen Stokes here? I don't see her. So there's no one to ask questions to, if we had any? Is there a motion?
I'd have no issue making a motion, because they seem to be, it's like a ritual. They seem to have a year to do it. There's never been a problem, so if people want to have a block party, all the power to them. So I'd make a motion that we grant the request.
Second.
Is the motion a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? unanimous, one absent?
Then we have a request from Wendy Tisbert and Robert Warren to use the gazebo at the Rotary Park on July 27th from 5:30 PM for the purpose of a wedding ceremony. This would be 5:30 to 6:30. They estimate the approximately 40 guests, and they will be using the Friendship Lodge for parking. I think the only, we periodically receive these requests in the past, and the only caveat that we put on it is that we, it is a public park, and so we cannot restrict people's use of it. But barring that, there's no issue. I would say that we reached out to Little League, just in the event that there was anything going on. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any response back, so I can't say for sure whether there's any Little League activity going on, but...
I'll move to grant the request. Second.
All right. Is the...
A second for discussion.
Motion and a second on discussion.
Second for discussion. I just want to say is that when you're taking pictures, make sure in the background, there's nobody, when I get married at the Andover Country Club, there's my wife and there's myself, photographer took a picture, and way in the background, guy was teeing off playing golf. It's right there on the mantel. It's right there, so I'll never forget that, so don't make the same mistake. Oh, that was wonderful, they took pictures and this and that. And then when we get them, I go, oh my God, you know? Hey, happy wife, happy life, right, guys? Yeah.
Congratulations. Hopefully, I'll bring weather.
Okay, all in favor, seeing that I'm saying, raising your hands? Okay, congratulations. Best of luck.
Come down for a little wedding cake, is that, you know? There you go. All right. Good luck.
So we're on to public comments?
Yes.
Okay, on to public comments. Welcome. Yes. Just state your name and address for the record.
Stand up, or can I just say?
However you want to do it.
So Jeff Wood, 18 Frederick Drive. So I'll probably defer some of my questions here around the S&amp;P rating. I want to congratulate Mr. Hull and anybody from the town involved with getting an A-plus rating. I didn't think that could happen with the OPEB liability, but congratulations, that did go through. So, Mr. Chairman, you and I have gone back and forth on this at a couple of different meetings. I know you have a plan, but I just don't think it's adequate enough. Clearly, they've come back and said, what did they come back and say? When they say that our plan is not a plan, what were some of the highlights of their comments?
Well, yeah, one of the challenges with an S&amp;P rating is they don't, in this case, they didn't offer specifics as to what they would like to see in a plan. We can certainly infer certain things, and one of the inferences that I've made as it relates to OPEB is that they would like to see steps taken on the cost end to try to reduce the cost of our insurance. You know, we've certainly made a deliberate effort and a sustained effort over the last several years now to put money aside into the OPEB trust fund, and we've made, you know, similar efforts on the pension side to put money into the pension stabilization account and to prepay. But I think they're looking for a plan that would suggest that by a certain date, we will have taken specific actions with regard to reducing the benefits. As the town accountant, Mike Morris, noted, you know, that's certainly something we will take a look at. The challenges, one of the challenges is when you have 12 municipal collective bargaining groups to deal with. You know, it's not an easy task, but, so I guess that is what I believe they may be talking about, is looking at ways to reduce the cost and establishing some targeted deadlines.
I can, I can tell you that the town of Wilmington is doing more than other towns when it comes to OPEB liability, and they're addressing that issue. That I can assure you. And as for the, and as for the pension portion part of it, I mean, it's, that's, that's at the Middlesex County Retirement System. They have a five-member board that sets the rate based off of valuation that they have come in. So if they're at a 7.75, it's on that valuation that they receive from their actuary. So unless that actuary wants to bring that down to 7.5 or 70, and then that could extend the liability from 2035, but you really don't want to do that. So you want to try to bring that down as best you can. Like I said, most boards are within the range of 7.5 and 7.75, so you would think that S&amp;P would know that, but...
Just to that point, the, in talking to Pam McKenzie, the treasurer collector, and she is on one of the subcommittees at Middlesex Retirement, the retirement board is looking at reducing the rate of return that they use for their estimates from the 7.75, trying to work it down to 7.5. The challenge that they're up against is, as they reduce that estimated rate of return, as the chair indicated, that increases the liability and will increase the annual assessment to cities and towns. My expectation, and it has been my expectation for some time, that the Middlesex Retirement System is going to have to dial back that rate of return. And so one of the reasons that I've recommended that we build up this stabilization account for retirement is when we get, in a given year, hit with a 7, 8, 9% increase in our assessment, some of which is intended to cover that pension liability, we won't have to take all of that increase out of the operating budget. We can take some of the funds from that stabilization account, so it serves as a shock absorber to some measure.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, so I have two separate questions. I was in here a little bit late, so did you approve the minutes of April 2nd and May 14th?
We did.
Okay, so I know another resident had brought this up at the last meeting, I watched it on TV, and I was like, yes. So this is the, I've also had the same frustration, that I don't think you guys approved the minutes of meetings in a timely manner. So I went up and looked at the website a couple of days ago, and the only things I saw on there were the two from January. There was nothing February or March, and doesn't sound like this. So what is it that holds these up? I heard you come, you know, you said about the executive meetings, I understand that about legal things, you've got to be careful, but what is really holding up the minutes of these selectmen's meetings to be approved and posted on the website?
Well, certainly, one of the challenges here in the last several months has just been the other activities going on in terms of the person that is responsible for preparing the minutes is also responsible for the annual town report, which is on a deadline. The town calendar, which is part of that, involved in the budget process. So there's a lot that goes on between, you know, December and town meeting. So it, you know, it's just a matter of hours in the day and, but we will look at getting that more under control.
I think that's a great answer. So I guess from a common sense perspective, why didn't you approve February? Why pick April 2nd and May 14th?
Well, I think, you know, some of the minutes were shorter, shorter to complete. I mean, so the administrative assistant is responsible for completing them, and those, I guess, were shorter minutes to complete.
Are you sure of leaving?
Yeah, I would say.
And when it comes to the trash, what's our total liability? When you're saying that you've approved to take 50% up to 50 tons, what does that mean as far as total liability for the town that we're going to have to pay?
Well, so the town, on an annual basis, collects approximately 2,500 tons of recyclables. So in, you may recall that at the public hearing, Finance Committee Planning Board public hearing, I requested that the Finance Committee consider a recommendation to adjust the recycling and trash collection budget by $153,200, anticipating that we may be in this situation. So with that, if worst-case scenario, we, the cost for the disposal of recyclables remained at $100 or more per ton, and we were paying the 50, we would be covered within the budget. Now, you know, I suppose, is that the worst-case scenario? I hope it is. If it turns out that, you know, the tonnage, that the price for this material goes up to $125, $130 a ton, is it possible that Russell may come back and say, you know, we need additional help? It's certainly possible. But, you know, all I can do at this point is, is try to at least meet them partway, given that the alternative would be, as I noted earlier, that the, any competitors that we sign up with would pass that cost through at 100%. So just going to have to wait and see.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Please state your name and address.
Kevin McDonald, UMS. I wasn't intending to speak on the OPEB or Standard and Poor's. I have a couple of other questions, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things with regard to Standard and Poor's that you may not know. I believe it was in 2006 or 2008, they gave the banks an A-plus rating. Those banks, when we had the meltdown, prior to that, they had an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's. You can, you can check me out on that, but there's actually a movie down, there's actually a documentary down at the library you could get, and you can watch it. It's called "The Inside Job." It would be pretty informative. With regard to the trash contract, what, what efforts have you been putting into this, Mr. Hull, to check on other sources to get rid of the recyclables since we were told China seems to be a problem? And that's the resulting, this, this, this whole situation is resulting from that. I find it really hard to believe with all the other countries in the world that we're just relying on China. And I was wondering what type of...
I can tell you, I don't have the diplomatic contacts to be dealing with Indonesia or any of the other countries. I think that's something that perhaps folks with a little bit more clout would have to do.
I'm not asking to go over to Indonesia, but what I'm asking you is, there's going to be some other recycling companies other than Casella that take the plastic and have some other source. And I'm just asking you, who have you reached out to beside Russell, beside Casella, to see what other avenues are out there to get rid of this stuff?
The Public Works Department has contacted five other competitors to Russell, and as was noted earlier, this is not a problem unique to Wilmington. The other vendors are having similar issues. It's a national and international issue, and in fact, there was an article in the New York Times today talking about Oregon and California in the same boat. So, you know, it's, the problem, as I understand it, is that because China took such a significant amount of this country's recyclables and is now no longer taking that material, that the country, not just Wilmington, is challenged by finding other places to send this material. Murfs like material recycling, recycling facilities like Casella can only stockpile it for so long, and then they have to either bury it in landfills or, you know, they're up against it. So this is not an easy issue for any communities nationwide to solve.
What's the, what's the difference between getting rid of recycles and getting rid of trash? What's the tonnage amount on the trash?
I don't have the tonnage number, the exact tonnage number offhand on trash, but I believe it's something in the order of 85 or 8,800 tons. Approximately, and I'm...
$85 a ton?
No, 80, you asked, if I understood you, you asked the tonnage, so the tonnage is...
I was wondering what the price per ton is to get rid of trash versus the price per ton to get rid of recycles. And the reason for the question is simply, maybe we should just send it to the landfill if this is a big issue and we're going to have to pay more money for it.
Well, so the, the price per ton to send the material to North Andover where it's incinerated, I believe, is something in the order of $67 or $68 a ton. The problem, and we've had this discussion internally, that gee, at some, at a point in time here, it's less expensive to send it to North Andover, but they're governed by DEP regulations, and they would reject the tonnage. They would reject the material if we were to mix it with regular trash or just send it as a standalone product. They would not accept it.
It seems to me like a letter should be written to DEP to expose this problem and get them to soften their stance on that, since it's a nationwide problem. get them to soften their stance on that since it's a nationwide problem.
You make a good point. The contractors, collection contractors have had, as I understand it, a meeting with representatives at DEP to raise this issue, that this is not a limited-time issue, that, you know, this isn't just a blip in the, on the radar. I have not seen any evidence that they're necessarily looking to change their policy. I've also had conversations with our representatives, representative at the Mass Municipal Association in terms of suggesting that this needs to be brought to the legislature and the governor. Again, I think there's some discussions happening, but I don't know exactly, you know, where that all is. I think one of the challenges here is that it's taken so many years to convince people to recycle, to now tell people that, to stop recycling because we don't have a place to put it, is, has its own set of problems, so...
Well, I know we're going with single-stream recycling now, and everything's mixed together, but we actually have a recycling place in Wilmington that takes cardboard and paper products, and maybe we should get back into just separating it again, if you can talk to that place on Andover Street that does the recycling. But, you know, I'll let you, I'll let you handle that, but the, a couple of other things that I wanted to mention was, you went to executive sex, excuse me, you went to executive session to discuss strategies for purchasing the hockey rink, and I know you can't discuss those strategies or else you wouldn't have went into executive session, but I did want to bring up something that's of a concern, and I think it's a problem. When you went to town meeting and you asked the people of Wilmington to purchase the rink or take it by eminent domain, there's one thing that you failed to identify, and that's that the rink is a condo unit. If you look on the tax bill, it's clearly identified on there as a, as an industrial condo unit. And with regard to condos, usually condos don't have a set condo fee. So I'm looking at this as a financial disaster when, or if, or when, and hopefully you don't take the rink, but if you do, there's no cap, there's nothing that says the town of Wilmington isn't going to be paying an extraordinary amount for a condo fee. And what are we going to be paying to fix every other condo? I just think that it's, there's a legal problem here, and I think that you should hold off in doing anything, because I think this is a pretty serious problem. I don't think that you can take something by eminent domain that's a condo unit and get rid of the condo fee. It just doesn't make sense to me. It would be just like taking a, a unit at one of these Avalon places, one of these condo units at some of these other places and saying, oh, we're the town of Wilmington, we don't have to pay a condo fee. So I just see that being extraordinary. I drive by the rink and I look at the roof and I see it rusting, and are we going to have to buy a new roof? So I would like to at least think about that. And the last thing that I wanted to bring up was, you see that sign right behind you where it says Wilmington, Mass. Incorporated, 1730? It was incorporated as a nonprofit organization. However, when I go to town meeting and I see various items that get brought up at the town meeting, for example, the financing or the, the financial, the amount that's financially established to run the recycling center, okay? And then you charge people to go dump, to pay taxes, it's like you're double-dipping. And I look at the, I look at the trash contract, and it's clear in there that we're not supposed to get charged to get rid of white goods, such as refrigerators, stoves, dishwashers, but then people have to come down here and pay $15 or whatever it is to get rid of it. So what I'm saying is, you're incorporated as a nonprofit organization, but yet it doesn't, I'm concerned that you're going to lose that status if somebody brings a lawsuit against you. And it's clear what you're doing is a profitable business. I believe there was a person that actually referred to the town of Wilmington as a $100 million enterprise that was in the government, and it just doesn't seem right to be hammering people that pay a lot of taxes. When I look around other parts of the country, communities that have relatively the same amount of population and the same amount of services, and they're being paid taxes of like, you know, half of what we're being paid. And I, I'm listening to the gentleman in front of me talk about OPEB, I'm looking at the assessed amount at the town meeting for the OPEB liability, and then I'm seeing we take, we have to take a million bucks and supplement it or put it in a fund. And so maybe you can speak to that, Mr. Hull, and maybe you can speak to us about the assessment. What does the assessment of OPEB represent? And who are the watchdogs to see if the investments are tanking, if we're bailing out bad investors? And it just doesn't seem like, I don't see the oversight. I mean, I'd like to see middle...
Kevin, thank you for your, your comments. I appreciate it.
Could you address them?
And now we're going to go on to important...
Would you like to address them, Mr. Coward, or just blow them up?
No, those were your public comments, correct? I didn't hear a question in there. I thank you for that. I let you speak for more than five minutes, and I think that that's plenty of time. Thank you, thank you so much.
I hope that the global five minutes was...
Yes, you did, as a matter of fact.
...tell me?
Yeah, you did.
New business, first.
I'm sorry, yeah, new business. Is there any new business? Yes, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick things. I want to compliment our veterans agents, Lou and Mike did a fantastic job putting together yesterday's services to honor Wilmington's finest heroes, and I also compliment the Police and Fire for their contributions. It was really, it was a great ceremony. I'm glad people came out despite the weather, and I'm glad that they, the rain held off. And again, my kudos to all those who put that together, great services. And I just want to congratulate the graduates of Wilmington High School and Shawshin Tech that'll be graduating in the next couple of days. Thank you.
Just touch upon the Memorial Day Parade, I'll just echo with, my colleague said, Mr. Bendel, and I just got to say, the two chubby guys, we made it all the way from the plaza, all the way to the cemetery, and we did it.
We didn't do that, did we?
But you were about 10, you were about 20 feet in front of me, I'll admit that, so I came in last, but we did it. Thank you.
And I too will echo the comments of, it was a great day. The Memorial Day festivities all weekend long. Lou and Mike did a fantastic job on behalf of the town. And also DPW, the police, the fire, everybody, the, the school, the band, it was just a wonderful day, the Shriners and the parade, so a lot of thank yous to go around to a lot of people.
I'd like to also, kudos to Lou and Mike and, again, the Police and Fire Department, the Boy Scouts who were there yesterday and also helped decorating, but it was an incredible weekend for the veterans. That being said, I'd like to do a shout-out to Private First Class Antonio Gagnon, who was a lifelong resident of Wilmington in the US Army. He was killed in action in July 16th, 1950 in Korea. He was formally a missing person, he was formally missing in action and was returned home aboard the USS Alamo in April of 1952. May he rest in peace and thank you for his service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Important dates.
Important dates. We have June 1st through the 2nd is the Council for the Arts 38th Annual Art Exhibit, 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Saturday, and Saturday 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Recreation Fishing Derby, Town Beach, 9:00 a.m. to noon. June 2nd is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. June 3rd is the Wilmington High School graduation. Also, June 3rd is the Harden Tavern Open House, 4:30 Salem Street, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. June 6th, Board of Selectmen meeting with regard to interviews for legal services, starting at 6:00 p.m. June 6th, the Brush Drop Off, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. June 7th is the Shawshin Tech graduation. June 8th, Rotary, Rotary Trivia Night, Knights of Columbus. June 9th is a Brush Drop Off, Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. June 9th is also a Townwide Yard Sale, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. June 9th, the Town Beach opens. June 10th, Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, June 10th, Brady's Foundation 5K Run for Recovery, Town Common, 9:00 a.m. June 11th, it is Board of Selectmen's meeting here, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. June 12th is the second interviews with the Board of Selectmen and potential candidates for council services. June 15th to 16th is the Wilmington Relay for Life, Wilmington High School, Friday afternoon, June 15th to Saturday morning, June 16th.
That's it? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
There are second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Unanimous, one absent? And that's it? Thank you, good night.